Good evening. Welcome to our workshop session. It is 6:01 PM and we are back with a full quorum. And the first item on the agenda is a presentation on the state of the ATL Airport District. And I believe Ms. Smoke is going to be heading that up.
With matching shoes.
Right, that say ATL District on the back. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we just wanted to kind of give you a mid-year review of where we are from July 1 through December 30. And first and foremost, the meetings and tourism industry is totally back in full swing. We have emerged from the pandemic, super healthy and stronger than ever. Several of the things that we've done, we've downsized our office space because we found out that being able to work from home most of the time proved to be much more efficient, but we still have a home base for when we do need to come into the office and have our staff meetings or things of that nature. We are continuing to focus our sales efforts on keeping the GICC and the arena booked with meetings and events, which leads to an increased hotel occupancy in our area. And just so you know, we are totally outperforming all of our peer groups in occupancy, including the city of Atlanta. So we're doing something right. We're also striving to strengthen our partnership with the city of College Park by supporting and marketing our local city events, not only to the visitors, but also to the residents. Next slide. So our mission of the ATL Airport District is to generate economic development for the cities of College Park, Hakeville, and Union City by effectively marketing the community as a preferred tourism, convention, and meeting destination. Our vision is to be the most accessible, customer-focused destination in the United States for conventions, events, and tourism. Next slide. Just a little input on the industry updates. According to World Travel and Tourism Council, the forecasting Economist Intelligence states that global tourism will rise by 30% this year. Corporate and business travel is expected to make significant gains this year, and industry events will likely play a starring role. And a number of top 25 markets, including the city of Atlanta, will hit full recovery by May of 2024. I honestly think, though, we are already there. We're ahead of the city of Atlanta. Just to give you an idea on our sales report, the overall sales leads this year were 383 so far, which is a 41% increase against last year's numbers, which were 272. The total definite room nights is 25,153 compared with last year at 21,522. And that equates to an overall economic impact of $27,861,632 as compared to last year, which was $26,024,536. So just so we break it down so you can see how that equates for the city of College Park, because those are all overall numbers for all three cities. The total definite room nights for this year for College Park were 23,405. So that's compared to the total of 25,153. So the city of College Park is getting the lion's share of the business. The economic impact for the city of College Park equates to $26.2 million as compared to this year's total so far of $27 million. So the results are in. College Park is doing great. And it's, a lot of it is in response to the Gateway Center. That continues to be a great place to sell, but you know, with the arena, the GICC, and all the hotel packages in that area. Some of the top groups that we've booked so far are the Southeast Qualifier and Invitational, the National Funeral Directors and Morticians Association, Varsity Spirit All-Star, which is a cheerleading competition, the International Conference on Missions, Full Gospel Baptist Church, the Young Leaders Conference, and USA Powerlifting 2024 Collegiate Nationals, which is an NCAA qualifier. So that's just to kind of give you an idea of the type of groups that we are booking collectively in the area. The sales team stays on the road. They have attended 15 trade shows during the first half of the year. And some of those trade shows I listed, you can see, there's a lot of them. I'm not going to go through all of them, but certainly if you have any questions about any of them, we'd be happy to answer them. They are on the road all year long advertising and selling the ATL Airport District. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about marketing, and I'm going to bring up our Director of Marketing, Gabrielle Andrews, who I brought with me to kind of go through that for you. Gabby?
Thanks, Gabrielle. Thank you guys for having us today. As Cookie mentioned, both corporate and business travel are and continue to be on the rise. We're seeing this trend having the biggest impact at the Gateway Center. You'll see that the GICC has been, we have been working with the GICC's team to service groups and events that are being held at the GICC and their arena by offering them things like welcome graphics on the digital boards and at the airport, key card services, we'll do some graphics on some key cards, social media promotion, welcome bags, and pre-show promotion. Thank you. The partnership that we've been having is not only limited to meetings and events on campus. Our team has also worked to market and promote the entire Gateway campus, as all their assets as a whole, by, you know, attending our monthly arena team meetings where we get with the Atlanta Dream and the Skyhawks, as well as our PR and social teams. And we just discuss strategies and initiatives that would be beneficial to the campus as a whole and all the parties involved, especially the city. We've recently partnered with Arches Brewing, as well as Atlanta Dream, and we had the Dream Empire beer that was offered, which was the only beer offered to a WNBA team. And that was a really good partnership. We recently won an award for that with Georgia Trend Magazine. And we have an article coming out later on this month or later on in the summer that goes into a little bit more detail about that. As far as College Park's events, within the last year, our marketing team has worked hard to ensure a number of key city events got the PR and marketing support that it deserved. We've worked really hard to promote on a number of different levels. Kids Fest, Gospel Fest came up, and we did a lot to work with that. We've been working with the Department of Recreation and Cultural Arts on the movie series, on Black History Month, the Black History Month Celebration, Denim and Diamonds, just a lot of different events. We've seen if we partner with those departments earlier on in the process, it does definitely helps promote the event a lot better. Recently, last week, we just started, we geared back up with our Black History Month Celebration meetings, getting ready for 2024. So it's been super beneficial for us to be involved with that department from the very beginning, talking through strategy, talking through theme. This year, or next year's theme is empowering our future by remembering our past. And so last week, we kind of discussed different ways to get the youth involved, just to make sure that, you know, from top to bottom, you know, College Park is represented the way that they need to be, and the youth can feel the impact of some of these events that we're hosting. We also have been working with Ginger and the Main Street Association with Wine Fest and Light Up the City and Tinsel Trail. So it's been really fun to get involved in the beginning of these events to help ensure that it's being promoted and marketed the way that it should be. Going back to our partnership with some of these departments and boards, we've been working with Francine Kennedy on Keep College Park Beautiful and that campaign. We've worked to ensure that the last year's sixth annual Word Four Festival went off without a hitch in providing graphics for that. And just been really involved with the Office of Public Information to ensure that whatever they need for different initiatives that they have, if we can do anything to help provide that, we're definitely getting involved in the beginning on that. And here's just a, just sampling of some of the things that we've worked on, like I mentioned, the hiring campaign, the citywide hiring campaign that we worked on. Cultural Arts is looking for, they have a recruitment campaign going on where we're trying to help them get some people to the board so it's not the same people doing the same things over and over again, just to try to make it fresh and innovative with different ideas. So we're helping them with that. Working with, again, with Main Street Association. I know College Park is trying to do a larger focus on cycling. So we help them with the t-shirt design for their upcoming family ride. We now have that bike map on a metal sign so that it can be put out in the public so people can see it, just to continue to promote cycling in College Park. And with that, I'll pass it back to Gabrielle.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, we just wanted you to get a picture of our team. You know, some of you haven't met everybody, so you would know them and see what their roles are. And that's it? I mean, we just want to thank you. Do you all have any questions for us? We're certainly glad to answer or do whatever we can.
Well, thank you, Ms. Smoke. We'll start with Councilman Clay.
Well, guys, this is a very, very impressive report. I went through it over the weekend, and I, it just blew me away. So I think the only question I have is, I'm curious. Cookie, you, you said a while back that coming back from COVID, you expected the mix of visitors to change more to local. And when I say local, I mean, maybe regional is a better term, as opposed to countrywide. Excuse me. And I, we're, we're, it certainly appears like you're back.
We are back.
Really back. So my question is, did your prediction come true? Are we, are those numbers being driven by more regional participation, regional and local?
I think last year, when we were coming out of COVID, we saw a lot more push on the regional traffic. People were staying in the state, they were traveling locally. Now we're back, we're seeing more people coming from airline, flying in, back to business as normal. Again, you know, back when I said that, that was exactly what was going on. We were definitely seeing a lot of local. I was one of them. I mean, I didn't go on vacation during COVID. I drove to Savannah.
Sure.
You know, and I think a lot of people were doing that.
Okay, well, let me ask a follow-up then. And that is, is part of the success of our business the fact that due to focusing on local during the COVID, leaving COVID, let's put it that way, did, did we retain maybe more business from that after people got to know us that maybe hadn't come regionally?
Well, I think we definitely, we definitely got a lot of business that we probably wouldn't have prior to, because a lot of business size shrank. So, so you got groups that were much larger, but because of COVID, they've scaled back. They're smaller now. They fit in our convention center. Not to mention the fact, it's much easier for people to come in, ride the Skytrain, or ride in any of our free transportation to our hotels. They don't have the hassle of getting in a cab or a, you know, an Uber and going downtown. And they feel safer coming to our areas. So we've definitely recovered. Not, you know, and, and I hate to say it, but downtown is really struggling right now. They, they are really, really struggling. I know you all saw that they lost the Democratic National Convention, which was really sad. And they really thought they had that. And Mercedes and I were involved in some of that planning. We were trying to capitalize on getting some of the events at the GICC. So, you know, it's a struggle right now with downtown, but we're not struggling. We're getting a lot of things that we normally wouldn't get, but it's because of our package. We have a great package.
Oh, yeah.
You all had the foresight to build that GICC and that Skytrain and those hotels. And I mean, it's just, it's hard to beat.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman McCorn?
All right, thank you, Cookie. Thanks for coming out. Yeah, it looks like we're out of, out of the pandemic. It looks like the numbers at least look like that, so I'm glad to hear that. You mentioned you downsized your office space. I wanted to know approximately by how much and what was the rental rate change? Did you go from this much rent to that much rent?
Well.
And what was the percentage of decrease, would you say, in terms of space overall?
We cut it in half, basically. We had roughly 3,000, 3,200 square feet. We're down to like 1,600 now. We're in the same office building. We moved right next door. So we didn't even have to change our address. They allowed us to keep the same suite number, which was great. It cut our costs by roughly $4,000 a month, which is money we can use now to buy business, to put in the GICC and, and other facilities in our area. So it's really more beneficial for us to not have to spend all that money on rent when a sales team's on the road, they're traveling, you know, you're out and about. when a sales team's on the road, they're traveling, you know, you're out and about.
Right. Okay, so that four K a month reduction, is that a fifty percent reduction, thirty percent reduction?
Yeah, roughly, yes, yes, roughly.
So it's about commensurate with the, with the production of space?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, that's good news. Uh, a couple of things I saw in here. Uh, the definite room nights.
Yes.
That was a big bump. Glad to see that.
Right.
But I worry about Haightville and Union City. I'm assuming the, the other room nights are them?
Yeah, they are. Yes, sir.
Well, just, we want to keep an eye on that, uh, I think, in a sense, uh, you know. Uh, and at some point, I want to, we'll talk offline about East Point and the situation, but we don't, I don't want to go into that. But I say keep that in mind particularly because, you know, we got three new hotels potentially opening up between this year and next year. So I don't, so that's going to dwindle away more of that yellow, possibly, and I don't want to see what happened, happened again. So, so just, I want us to be cognizant of.
Oh, we're, trust me, we are on it.
Um, and I agree with you when you say we got a good package. Uh, I think we do. You know, we all worked hard. You know, I worked very hard to put, help put the pieces of the puzzle together that we needed. I think we almost have every piece of the puzzle that we need, I think except one. And, um, that's the fun factor. The city doesn't have enough, the, the fun factor's not here. And that's something I want us to look at working on. Um, and I guess you, you know what I'm talking about in a sense, you know? Uh, you know, stuff to do. I don't want, you know, we, we want to keep folks from pulling out of here to fun stuff, you know, whether it's the Ferris wheel or the aquarium or whatever have you. And, uh, don't get me wrong, it's just top-notch, world-class, great stuff, and I know we can't compete with all of that. But, uh, you know, we gotta, we gotta start thinking along the lines of some other amenities besides golf. So I want y'all to keep that in the back of your heads, because I think that's the one missing piece of the puzzle that I think would really send us into orbit. So, um, I think I had one other thing. Uh, this National Funeral Directors deal, is, is this the first time we're hosting this?
No, it's the second time. They, they came back.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, I, I thought that was a new one. I had never seen it before.
It's a repeat piece of business, but yes, it's a good piece of business.
And this local, these groups booked, I'm assuming this was you, you all and, and the GICC team collectively?
Oh, yeah, we work very closely with the GICC.
All right, well, that's good to know.
Definitely.
Uh, also with, uh, you said we got digital boards at Hartsfield-Jackson that we're advertising on right now?
We're not advertising, but we have, they have, um, they have digital boards on their baggage claim, uh, turnstiles. So when a group, like when we had the AKAs in it, in, in the GICC, we did a welcome graphic that the airport put on those baggage claim, uh, screens so that it said the ATL Airport District welcomes AKAs too. So that's, that's what we use it for. They let us use that for welcoming groups. It's not really for advertising, but it's to welcome groups.
Well, what's to stop us from doing that with every client of a certain large number coming out?
Nothing. We, we do it for large, larger clients. We do, most of the ones that are on this list are, are on that screen at the airport.
Okay, and I know I've seen other digital boards at Hartsfield-Jackson. Um, let me ask you this. The, uh, the largest, the Jumbotron board, when you're coming off of the, uh, the, um, interior transit train there up to baggage claim, the, the, you know, the gigantic one, that used to be the painting, but it's now it's a digital board. Do they allow advertising on that one?
Uh, if they do, it's probably very, very expensive, but.
Well, I'd like us to find out if they do, or I'd like, I'd like you to find out if they do, number one. Number two, if they do, I'd like to know how much, because, you know, we're still trying to spend all this money annually. So, you know, I, I'm sure it may be expensive, but that, 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 that point, that, that, that pinch point is pretty much everybody is coming off of an airplane, if I'm correct. Is that right?
Yes.
Every single person, right?
Going to baggage claim.
Or going, you know, going out to.
And there's a welcome, uh, uh, sign above it that we welcome groups on too. There's a screen above that one.
Well, let's see if, if there's any advertising opportunities on that, on that biggest screen.
Okay.
You know, I know they, you know, it's sort of coming into the city of Atlanta, but technically they, they say welcome to College Park, but I, I don't think we win that battle, but.
No, I don't think so either.
The other thing, could, have we ever, I don't know if College Park TV, if we could, like, put together just a, some type of a, a promotional video, uh, promoting the Gateway Arena itself and some of the.
We, we've done that. We, we have a College Park video that's on our we- is it still on our website?
It is, it's on our website, but.
But we are now in the process of doing a new one that we're going to roll out on August thirtieth at our annual meeting. So you need to save that date. We're going to be giving you more information, but we are rolling out a new focused-on-meeting planners that will sell the Gateway's area.
And I, I wondered if any of those videos would be something that we could use for our local television station where people could see if we, and I don't know if we have something playing right now, you know, advert, you know, showcasing the arena itself on CP twenty-three, but I don't think we do. But if you already got something that you produce, you know, send it on over.
Well, we have our, yeah, we do. We have our three sixty tour, but the video, the College Park video that we have on our site, um, it was made before the arena opened, correct? So we would need to have some new assets created.
So we, we, we don't have a, 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 a arena video, you know?
No.
What do they call it? Scissor wheels?
Right before COVID, and then COVID hit, so we were kind of a little bit limited on.
Well, that might be something good to put together, something.
It's going to be part of this video that we are working on right now. It's supposed to be completed by the end of May. And then we are going to air it for the first time at our annual meeting.
Okay.
And it will have arena in it, definitely.
All right, sounds good.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Councilman Allen?
Uh, well, you know how I feel about you all. Y'all do a fantastic job. And, you know, anytime you put Cookie together with Mercedes and Gabby and, and people like that that are out selling our city, uh, you do an awful lot of good. You, you do things that people don't realize, stuff for, for Kids Fest, uh, I mean, I still have a backpack with your all's name on it that, that you all were giving away to kids, uh, the Gospel Festival, all of them. You're out there putting posters together, putting signage out there, which, uh, is, is very good to see. So, uh, appreciate every single thing that you all do. You have a great crew.
We do.
Miss CNAT here, but, uh, I'm sure she's working on the.
She needed a much, she has, she's on a much-needed vacation right before Spin the District.
Oh, I was going to say.
She's coming back tonight. Don't worry. We're gonna, we're gonna wear her out in the next two weeks.
But again, you know, Spin the District, uh, is, is also very good. But you have a lot of new things that you can promote for the South Side, and whatever's good for the South Side is good for College Park. So if you promote, uh, like the new Porsche track and things like that, you know, that'll bring people out. And like you show, a lot of people stay in College Park, so, uh, just appreciate everything you all.
The Delta Museum is another great attraction out here. People love it.
So.
We want to keep them out here, really, if we can.
Well, and again, uh, like Councilman Carr was talking about, if we can get them here in College Park, there are places where they can go. There's great places to eat, there's, uh, the Porsche, there's, uh, Chick-fil-A. There's a lot of different places where they can go around in the area, so, you know, I'd like to, like to see.
And great restaurants, too. Let's not forget that.
Fantastic restaurants, so, anyway, thank you for everything that you all do. Appreciate it very much.
Councilman Gay?
Well, I do agree with, uh, everyone else that DMO is going beyond increasing visitation and bettering up the lives of residents, and I see that in the many programs that y'all support. I also have a question and a comment and a request.
Okay.
The question is, when you were explaining about GICC, how does the GICC sales team work collaboratively with the DMO sales teams, and how do y'all quantify who's contributing to the revenue? I mean, which, which effort is contributing to the revenue?
Well, we work very closely. For example, back in August, we did a trade show. Um, and Mercedes was in the booth with myself and Kristin Schneider, our VP of Sales. So we work together in tandem. Um, the new Director of Sales at the GICC, Ricky Vandevall, I've known Ricky for over twenty years. We, we collaborate together. We target business. We're both dialing for dollars, but we work together to bring it to fruition. Um, we do sites together. Um, our team might find a customer at a trade show that they bring in. We collaborate with the GICC. I mean, honestly, there, there are arms. And we couldn't do it without the GICC. And that's why I have Mercedes on speed dial, trust me. She, I have her cell phone, her home phone, and her work phone, because we, we work collectively. And when we say those are the room nights we booked, of course, the GICC's not as concerned with room nights. We are. We're funded by hotel motel tax, so we, we have to put heads in beds. But we can't do it if we don't fill the GICC, and when we do fill the GICC, it, it all, you know, rising tide lifts all boats.
Yes.
So that's, I mean, we are a very cohesive team.
Great.
And what, you had another question?
Yeah, I, I do, and, and, and just to piggyback on that, I bring that up because we are in budget session.
Mm-hmm.
And what I realize is that we subsidize the GICC approximately, I can be corrected if I'm wrong. I thought, I, I thought it was approximately four million dollars that we sub- that, how much was it? Can somebody tell me? They shaking their heads?
About two million this year.
About two million. So I was just looking at the two efforts. Where can costs be contained or cut in, in all departments, not just, not just yours? Uh, this, the other, the request I have is that we have, what, one more budget session? Can the, I'm asking, can the financial reports for DMO be presented at our last budget session?
No, sir. Unfortunately, because it is hotel motel tax, it's restricted, and we have a board that we pass our budget through that has a representative from each of you that approves or disapproves our, our budget. So it's not something that we can do with you. But we can, we do it, and we wait until your finance director tells us what our budget's going to be for next year. They, they give us the number that we then budget around for the next year. But we certainly can share with you once it's approved, our budget, all of that. We, we, we're transparent. We'll share anything with you you want to see, including our audit. We have nothing to hide.
Oh, no, I wouldn't suggest in that, but because we are in a budget and because the city.
I understand.
Does have to audit its budget, and because you all do receive our tax. Mo- I just thought it makes perfectly good sense to, to look at it contemporaneously.
I think it gets convoluted because you have two other cities that are in partnership with us, but the, it can't, it can't be perceived that the city controls our budget. That's the issue.
Oh, so you're saying after we give you the revenue that you all are to expect in 2023, you will come back and share your, your projections, your budget?
We will establish our budget. Once we get it from yourselves, from Haightville and from Union City, then we will all, we're getting ready to get in our budget process now. We will establish what our budget's going to be, and then we will present it at our board meeting, and we will get the approval, and then it will be set, and we can share it with you if you'd like to see it. More than happy to.
They may want to see it.
Sure, I'll share it with anybody. I mean, like I said, we're very transparent, Councilman Gay. We don't, we, we, we don't want to end up on the front page of the AJC.
The, the recommendation I had, since we are talking about going beyond increased visitation, the recommendation I have is that, um, I would like to see an opportunity to market Main Street more as it goes down to Herschel, because it, because what happens is that the hospitality district is on that new part of. And we did get the Wayfinder signs, Ms. Miller, and that made a difference. But I would like to see, and what that could look like is maybe y'all could do some stuff down there. Maybe you could do some stuff in the GICC, um, property. Out, we have outparcings down there. But just more ways to, because visitors who come and go, they don't necessarily stay here, so they may not be around for some of the events that we have.
Right.
So I would like to see more of an effort out of the DMO dollars to market the hospitality district, which, which I call it, which is now Main Street.
Right.
The second thing is that, um, I, I was reading about a DMO in the city that took some of its dollars and started a student, start training students. That was an allowable use of their dollars, so I would like to look, see what that could look like.
You know, we, we took on an intern a few years ago. Um, the, we, we couldn't pay them. We can't salary them. But we can certainly take on intern here or there and let them work with us if they're interested in getting in the hospitality industry.
Right. I think.
Yeah, definitely.
And I, you know, we have a school coming up here next year, the B High School. That may be an opportunity. I know they got their agenda set with Metropolitan Community College, but that may be an opportunity to start talking with them about introducing our community to hospitality and see how we can support that. And then the final thing is that, speaking of our appointees approving y'all's board, um, I would like.
Approving our budget?
Our budget.
Yeah.
I, I would like to see, and, and just as a record, I always like to bring out that the late Lonnie Kurt.
Yes, sir.
Is Ward Four founding board member. So I want to give his shout out. He's going on to glory, but.
We love Lonnie.
Our Ward Four was the founding board for, for DMO. But the final comment I was going to make is that, um, the DMO board members, I'd like to see more how we can support them. I don't know that you could pay them, but to, you know, the service they provide, improving, you know, million-dollar budgets and showing up, I don't know if that looks like training, if they could go on, or training, ba- uh, stipends. Uh, I think that, well, you just need, I just feel like they need more than just rubber stamping and just showing up.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we have to be very, again, we have to be very careful how we do that because it is hotel motel tax, and it is very restricted funding, and it must be used for marketing.
Well, I, I met with the, the state rep, Vincent Fort, who, uh, sponsored the DMO for College Park. So maybe one day we'll have a workshop and have a conversation about just how restricted those funds are. Uh, it's a lot of ambiguous language in that, so maybe we could sit down and find out, be creative on just how much we can do with those dollars.
Ms. Milk, thank you so much for your time tonight.
Mark your calendars for the thirtieth.
August thirtieth.
Spin the District.
Oh.
Crawfish boil and August thirtieth, so thirtieth, this month and August.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let me just mention, if you, if you've never been to the GICC when they have those cheerleading competitions.
Oh, it's amazing.
With, with those kids running around everywhere.
Yeah.
Buying Mercedes food. I love that. They're spending a lot of money on food. In fact, I don't know how much they spent a couple of weekends ago. They spent.
Well, that All-Star Challenge has been coming to the GICC for twenty years. They come back every year. So that tells you something, right? We're retaining business too.
And they're staying in our hotels.
We're getting new business, but we're retaining business, and that's thanks to Mercedes and her team.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Have a great evening.
You too.
We will move on to the consent agenda. The first item is consideration of, uh, bid approval for the GICC arena campus entrance on the sales structure refurbishing project. Questions for Ms. Miller on this issue? Any?
I have a couple.
I just had a question.
Well, hold on, wait, hold on. Councilman Carr had a, had a question.
Well, I'm glad we're getting, getting this done, obviously. Uh, things have been hanging in for a long time. Uh, I see the outfit that you got here looked, they look pretty good. My question is, is, is there any way you could inquire with them about adding some type of a warranty on, even if it's a, uh, you know, I see they're under a hundred thousand dollars, which is a good thing. But my thought was, if they would be willing to add some type of a warranty on to the package, uh, as long as you can keep it under a hundred thousand. as long as you can keep it under a hundred thousand, that way maybe we got four or five years at least if something else gets spotty, they can come and patch it up or something. What, what do you think?
Uh, I have to ask Mr. Moody. Mr. Moody, can that be added to the, um, RFP?
And I know everyone submitted a package. I didn't see a warranty in any of them, but can we ask for a warranty?
Mr. Moody said it's twenty years on the package.
I believe in the package, we did ask for a warranty on the paint or the primer portion of it. But I'll go back and check to make sure it's give you longevity once they do the coating and painting of it.
So you're saying this one that we're looking at, the Metro outfit, they, they have a twenty year?
It, it should be already included with the selected paint, but I'll double check.
Okay, okay, well, I hear twenty year on the paint. But does that mean in fifteen years, if things are chipping? I understand the paint is a warranty for twenty years, but will they come back and do the patchwork or whatever it is? I guess, you know, it's two different things, I suppose.
There could be many factors.
Okay.
They might not even last that long, I just don't know with the structure, so we'll go back out if we have to.
Well, but the, the, the warranty that you say we have, it's in writing with them, right? Or it'll be in writing with them? Okay, so it's gonna be specific in, in terms of what they will come back and do that we don't have to pay for?
Correct, this one entails, um, pressure washing off all the diesel from the airplanes, going back adding a new coat, seal coat, paint, rehabilitate them so they look fresh, brand new, going back into the campus.
And, and it sounds good and thorough. I, I'm just asking you, if that seal coat goes, does that warranty kick in and they come back out here and, you know, put another seal coat on or put a partial coat on or whatever is-
We'll make sure to look into that, that they'll come back and do any touch-ups if something was happening before that.
Well, let's, let's make sure we get the, the warranty that they have, that, that, if we, if we got it specified, you know, so, so that, you know, if it does, and hopefully it lasts the full twenty, that'd be great. But in, in, I just want to make sure we have something in writing where they can come back and make repairs after a certain amount of time. And that, I mean, twenty sounds long.
Twenty years is how long the last sales, uh, this month, March, twenty years that the GICC has been open. So it's lasted for twenty years.
Okay, okay, all right.
Councilman Allen?
I just, I just want to make sure that, that they're not gonna interfere with any of the events that you have going on or anything like that, so.
No, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Um, actually, the dream wants to wrap them, but we have to get them clean and get them, um, get them up to par before anybody can do with them. So they're really a moneymaker, but we have to get them back up to par.
Oh, absolutely, I agree with that, sir.
If, if they wrap, again, with the warranty, let's make sure if we wrap them, it doesn't void the warranty. You know, that's, that's a prime example, we want to make sure. You know, and they say, well, you, you had this outfit wrap them, so the, the warranty's void.
Well, if they wrap them, they have to provide us insurance.
Okay.
And they'll be responsible.
Good deal, all right.
Any other questions for Ms. Miller?
Uh, yes, I only have one, and, and that is, um, Mercedes, we had a problem with lightning strikes, uh, a while ago. At least it appeared to be a failure of the sale lighting induced by the lightning strikes.
That was about six, six, seven years ago.
Can, can we, if we have not already, when they do the work on the sales, look at properly grounding them, and I'm not, and I'm pretty knowledgeable, but I'm not a certified expert on protecting against lightning strikes. Maybe they need a small lightning rod on top. Maybe the sails have to be grounded differently. Maybe you've already taken care of that, don't know. But, uh, especially if we're going to put money in, and it's not a huge amount of money compared to everything else, but it's still significant. And I, I would like to sleep a little bit better the next time a storm rolls through to know that we've done everything we can to protect the electronics that drives it.
We actually have to use another company for the electronics of it. They are cleaning the sails and, um, they're gonna be scraping them and doing just the sails, not the, not the lights or the electro, electrical parts of it. But I will check on that, but I think-
Let me, yeah, well, let me throw that in as a possible adder. Maybe if you haven't done that already, you ought to bring in a consultant. Uh, just for consideration, it's up to city manager as to, you know, what he wants you to pursue, but I'll throw that out as a suggestion.
We can get the power department to look at them. I'll, I'll talk to you.
That's all I have.
Councilman Gay?
Uh, Ms. Miller, I had a, a recommendation and a question. When I was looking through, when I was looking through the package, I saw a landscape company withdrew their bid, but they submitted a price at nineteen thousand. My question is, is there any reason why they read the scope to think that this could only be nineteen thousand?
Um, from my understanding, we did send them information to make sure they understood. They did not understand the scope of work, and that's why they misbidded on it and they pulled out.
Okay, and my recommendation would be, I saw in another city, could you look into if it's possible to do digital lighting on our sales for particular events, say Fourth of July or Christmas, I seen a light show on sales at other, in, in Las Vegas? That's just a way to-
It is capable, we just, it is capable. Uh, we've had our marketing director to get some training on the, um, on using the lights, but it is a way to put wording on the lights and do other things on it.
Do you get images up there?
Um, I'll find out, I don't know, but I know that we can do, we can do more than we've been doing.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
You have to keep in mind on, on, if you do some kind of a light show that you're coming in right over the airport, so you have to make sure the FAA and everybody else is on.
Any other questions for Ms. Miller?
A couple. Now, would, would that be cheaper for us than the wraps, if we were to look at something along those lines?
Well, the wraps would not be paid for by us. The, the wraps we, that would be paid for by the company that wants to do it, and it would be insured by them.
Okay, but we would charge them to put it, to put it up, to put the advertising up there?
We charge them to put it up, but, but they were paid to have it.
Got it, got it, they pay for the materials and, and installation.
And they would maintain it, the same way they do inside the arena. They wrap the inside the arena and every year they repaint it.
Okay, but if we can look at some future lighting that, that would light up the sails and put wording on them, that's something to look at. Maybe that's another amenity we can add to customers that take, you know, you know, something in the future to look at. One other thing I thought about with the power department, and what they will do every few years is, you know, the telephone poles in the city, they will dig down, I don't know, one or two feet, and rewrap the poles with that, uh, with that mesh. And it's to keep, obviously, the wood from rotting. Now, the sails are metal, you know, metal in the ground, um, concrete footers I'd imagine or whatever have you. But over twenty years, you know, so just a thought, I don't know, maybe it'd be good of them to come and look at it because, you know, over time, even metal can, you know, so I don't know if that would make sense at all, but it wouldn't hurt to maybe have some of them come over there and just take a look and get, see what they think, since we're refurbishing, if they do it for the poles, maybe they dig down and put some kind of special wrap, you know, to keep the, 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 you know, the, uh, the base solid. So, just something, I, I think, I think it wouldn't hurt to have them take a look.
No problem.
Any other questions for Ms. Miller? Hearing none, we'll move to item four B, thank you, Ms. Miller. Uh, consideration of requests for approval, Axon Enterprises' annual contract uh, for the amount of three hundred seventy-one thousand, four hundred eleven dollars, twelve cents for the police department. Questions for the chief, anyone?
I've got one, chief. I know we talked about this early, like, early, early this year. So again, the, the, these body cams, they're gonna come with their own GPS system that I thought we said would eliminate the vehicles, the need for the vehicles GPS, what was that called? A, A something? That you called, you called it in the vehicles?
That's the GNSS that's in there.
Yeah, yeah, so-
It's a, it's a souped-up GPS system.
So would this eliminate the need for the, for the car version or the?
No, no, it would still have a car version as well.
Okay.
And all of the, uh, body cameras have been upgraded and installed. The car cameras, we're waiting for the remaining four to come in because they will only come out one time. So we're waiting for the other, uh, remaining four new vehicles to come in. And then when they come in to install in the vehicles, they will give training, uh, to some staff. So the upcoming vehicles that we will have coming in, will have staff who will know how to upgrade in the vehicles moving.
Okay, and, and the GPS with these, uh, body cams, it, it only functions if they're turned on or does it function regardless?
There's a GPS in the vehicle that functions at all times.
Okay, in the vehicles, but I'm saying on, on the body cam?
Yes, once it's turned, once they're active.
Okay, got it, all right, okay.
Any other questions for Chief Rogers?
Yes, uh, I, I gave her a list of questions and, and she responded to them this afternoon. In fact, that was part of the answer. The one part you didn't answer, well, I gotta follow up on to that, and that is, when, when are the four cars going to be in so that this process? Because you, you're, you're not, you're holding up everything-
Right.
On the cars.
Because they're only gonna come out one time.
They only gonna come once, so that, those four cars are holding up everything.
I'm anticipating them being in next week.
Next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good news.
And then we were scheduled for them to come out to do the install for the whole twenty-five, the, the new twenty-five.
Okay, so now the other part of my question, uh, that I, I don't think you did answer was, what about the things like, uh, the artificially intelligent analysis that's done on the body camera footage? You know, in other words, if you flag this face as being a perp, every time that perp appears in the footage, you want it to scan the footage and automatically flag. That was one of the analytical techniques that were part of the package, as I recall. Uh, are those installed yet?
They are, because they are, they are part of the body camera. So those, only thing that's not installed is the actual upgrade to the vehicles, and we've just been waiting for those remaining four to come in.
So, so once that is in place, we'll be able to live stream footage if we choose to-
Yes, sir.
From a body camera via relay from the car?
My anticipation, as soon as we get the first car installed, I'm gonna invite you out so you can take a look.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking forward to see all this.
Yes, sir.
I mean, this is tremendously, uh, effective and efficient. The amount of time that the officers can save going through that footage to prepare, uh, information for trial, evidence for trial, has got to be significant from what I observe.
From what it, from what it was, it would be significant, uh, decrease in time that's managed and that is spent.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any additional questions for Chief Rogers?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Chief, this question may not necessarily pertain to you, but it pertains to all of the contracts that are before us on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I spoke with the city attorney about this. Uh, often times we see lawsuits that resulted from, um, something that may have been missed. What I would like to see in order for me to vote on anything going forward are the following. I would like to see if this is a sole source procurement, if you got them from the, and it's not just to you, if, if, just to direct, if, if the contract was picked from some state register. However, I, I as a, I as the founder person to vote on it would like to know how we arrive to these contracts. All I'm seeing is just how much it costs and give them the hundreds of thousands of dollars. There's nothing about bids, there's no bid performance information. There's, I don't even know if the city attorney's office has looked at these contracts. These are like three hundred dollar, this thing says three hundred twenty-something dollars for five years, okay? So we vote on it, and then that's an issue, and then we, we say, well, I didn't see it, I didn't look at it. So what I'm saying, and I'm sure everyone would agree with us, for me, I would like to see the, the source of this award, meaning is it sole source, is it a state register? Or if it was bid, then I want to see the unsuccessful bidders. I want to see the score sheets, all right? If there's a contract for the successful bidder, I would like a copy of the contract to be included. Uh, if you, and, and, um, that's what I'm gonna need to see before I can vote on any other cost for the, for these, these taxpayers.
If you recall, Councilman, you and the rest of the, uh, council members did approve the Axon in January? So this is year two of that agreement, which is already sole source to Axon.
And you're right, but see, the problem is, I can't remember like that. Because see, if that was the case, you wouldn't have brought it back tonight. Tonight, there's an action that's needed. So for me, whether I approved it last week or last month, I need to remind me through some type of documentation because I can't think that, not for all different departments.
And I believe this is to pay the, uh, contract for this, this year on that renewal. Though we'll make sure that the documents include-
I don't disagree with you, I'm just saying, attorney, city manager, going forward, a copy of the bond. We have a law, we've had a lawsuit where we didn't check the bond. I'd like to see the performance bond or pay bond, whatever the bond that's required for these contracts. Should the contractor goes belly up. Two, I want to see if, I see they was, I see they was going, I don't see where they went through the law office. You see, it says through. So if it's a, so if there's a contract, and, and like you said, we cut, he may have did that five years ago or three years ago, but just remind us in some kind of presentation. And four, when there's contracts where there are unsuccessful bidders, I would like to, I'd like to know who they were, and I'd like to see your score sheet.
Are we talking about sole source or are we talking about everything in general?
Everything in general.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Rogers?
Uh, not particularly for Chief Rogers, but city manager, something I was thinking about. We've made a lot of strides with the police department over the last, over the last year and a half, actually. This, this technology package that we purchased was a pretty major package that's coming in phases still. And for some of this stuff, it's some of the first time we've had some of this stuff. We've had another generation of body cams, but some of the other stuff is really good stuff. We're also getting, you know, that was the largest fleet vehicle purchased last year that, since I've been up here, since oh-five, which is a big deal as well. And the thought in my head was maybe, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, public safety is still number one in residence, you know, no matter how you slice it. I thought it'd be good to maybe, you know, put something together where they could see the type of investment we've put into public safety in particular, with the twenty percent raise, the nine-one-one operators up to standards. And, you know, I saw in my mind, Stanley, you know, we got twenty-five brand-new shiny new vehicles. I saw in my head, you know, lining those things up where the public could see it and film it so that they know that this tax money that they're paying is going to doggone good use. And a lot of times, it's good to see it. And, I mean, I think that's worth talking about and bragging about. I always say if, uh, you know, if you don't toot your own horn, I guarantee you, your neighboring cities aren't gonna toot it for you. So the package, you know, that we've put together, fire department as well, got some new, new trinkets and toys and raises. I think it's worth talking about. I don't know if we could put something together to talk about that, but we almost have a brand-new, completely brand-new fleet, which we have never had at one swoop, fair swoop. I think that's something that we need to put together and, and, and do a press conference on or, get out there at the public safety parking lot, line everything up so people can see, here's what we're doing, here's what you're getting, here's what you're gonna see on the blocks. To let people know that, uh, if they're not watching the detail of this stuff on TV. So it's just some, something to think about. I think that'd be reassuring to a lot of folks to know that we're not just up here twiddling our thumbs. So just food for thought.
Additional questions for Chief Rogers? All right, she's got the third item on the agenda as well. Consideration of a request for approval to pay Central Square Technologies for annual maintenance and technical services to maintain the updates and service for One Solution RMS CAD Systems. Questions for the chief on that issue?
I have, this is the, I'm sorry, this is the Central Square issue.
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, no, I have no questions on that.
Anyone else have any questions?
Nope.
I had a, just a comment. There's a lot of licenses, boy. I, I just say, and I always talk about this software stuff, but I know you need them all. I'm assuming all of them are very crucial. They sound very important, aided dispatch systems, the whole nine. So this is an ongoing contract with the same outfit?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess, and, and, and one thing Roger did touch on was, you know, sometimes are there things that we can't, we, can we look, could we have looked- could we have looked at this contract and said, oh, well, we're not satisfied with how things are going. We're going to put it out for bid and see what else is out there. Or if we say, well, things seem like they're going okay, or, or what?
That has been discussed, uh, and that will be looked at for the next budget. And the only reason why now was we've been coming up and I didn't want this particular contract to expire, and we've been left with no RMS or CAD, but that is up for discussion for the next budget.
Okay, well, that's good to know. And, and some of these things are important. They got to be continuous to a point, to an extent. But with the software upgrades and stuff, everything ends at some point. But I always say, you know, when we can put out something for bid, even if, even if you're satisfied with it, I think sometimes it's a good idea to put that out when you can just to let folks know, hey, uh, you guys are doing okay, but we're still looking for, for, for a better deal so they don't get too comfortable, and the next year renewal rate is such and such. If you, if, if they know you're going out for bid, that next year renewal is, is going to, they're going to, they're going to think about that, right?
Fire chief and, uh, Mr. Hicks and I had a conversation about that earlier. And the only reason, like I say, why not, because we did not want to be left, I didn't want to be left without a CAD or RMS. If we decided not to go with them, and then it would take long with the bidding, but that would be something else for consideration on the next.
Okay, understood. So that, I mean, that's, that's an exception with that situation.
Yes.
All right, okay.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you, chief. We'll move on to item four D. Consider, consideration of a request to upgrade or replace the current Cisco and Enterprise phone services for departments throughout the city and using Windstream instead. Good evening, Mr. Hicks.
Good evening.
May counsel.
Questions for Mr. Hicks? Councilman Clay?
Well, uh, I got my questions answered, and I, it, it's not a cost increase. It's, it's a cost savings. So it's hard to argue with it, and I think, uh, the convention center has been using the technology for quite some time, and I haven't heard Mercedes complaining about it. Uh, I don't know, Mercedes is not out there anymore, but, but I, if she had a problem, I would have heard about it, I'm pretty sure. So, uh, I think this sounds like a great move. You answered my questions with regard to what happens if we get caught off with the internet. We can still make phone calls locally, and, uh, it also introduces the ability to do four-digit dialing across the campus. So, I'm a happy camper.
Councilman Carr?
So we can just do extensions without having to dial in the rest all the way at the convention center too?
Yes, so right now, we doing four-digit dialing throughout the network. That means from City Hall to Public Works to Fire Station Two and Three, we can do that now. We're still going to be able to do that. So we'll be able to increase that by expanding that to include the GICC. Right now, we don't have four-digit dialing today, but we have the same phone system that they currently have. If you guys can remember, I was on that team to upload and upgrade the phones at the GICC. So it's been tried and tested.
Well, uh, I knew we could do, you know, four-digit dialing here, but I didn't even know we could do it at the Public Works building.
We can now.
Yeah, but we can, but he's saying we could do it at Public Works and stuff now, or the Public Safety Complex. I didn't know we could go over there. Okay, well, that's news to me. But, and this adds to Convention Center additionally. All right.
Councilman Allen?
Uh, no, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, so, uh, you explained everything to me, answered the questions, so I'm fine.
Councilman Gay?
Uh, Director Hicks, I got a question. I need clarification on two things. And, and I'm okay with the, um, selection that you made. That's not my motive for the question. My question is, explain how you, how this is saving us ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, I'll tell you. So, so currently, yes, sir, currently, we have two different systems. We have our local and long-distance carrier, which is Windstream, and we have our Cisco phone system. Windstream is, Mr. Hicks, we can give you this full package, and you don't have to pay two different vendors. We'll give you the full package for less than what you're already paying. So when, when you look at those numbers that I put inside of the packet, it calculates a tremendous savings. If we didn't go this route, we've got to pay for Cisco, and we got to still pay for Windstream.
My second question is, Cisco is separate from Windstream, correct?
Yes, sir.
We currently use Windstream for some of our other IT applications, correct?
We use it for long distance and local. When you pick up the phone from your office and dial, you're using Windstream portal.
So, is that why this didn't go out to bid, because they are current vendor for another service?
Yes, sir, and, and I filled out the sole source form. I dotted all the i's and crossed the t's. It went through finance. I competed the sole source form, and it went through the attorney.
All right, so then I would like for us to start bringing those up here so that we can have them, so we can vote intelligently, okay?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Hey, uh, Mike, you mentioned, uh, long-distance carrier. You mean like, I mean, we don't still pay for like long-distance, long-distance, like we're used to now?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
And also, one of the other things I wanted to add is, we getting all new phones and all new service in customer service. So remember our customer service team, when they come in in the morning, they log into a system to take calls from customers. They're going to get all new equipment as part of the system as well.
I, I thought long-distance came with every phone package nowadays, like a cell phone, but.
But you've got to have a carrier, boy.
You, you, you still need to get to the internet. Somebody has to provide the communication link to the internet.
That's true. You know, my, my daughter, they're grown now, but they didn't believe that. I said, you know, I used to pay per minute for long-distance phone calls. They said, what are you talking about? And I found an old bill to prove it to them, and they were like, wow, you know, they couldn't, they, it was shocked. And I said, oh, yeah, you pay, you pay for every minute of long distance, because they don't consider a call to Texas as long distance. I said, it was long distance. Yeah, but, uh, okay.
Councilman Gay?
Will that be any interrupted in service? Like, will we be down?
No, sir. No, sir, we will not. As a matter of fact, we're going to go with a project plan to roll this project out. And we may do it department by department as opposed to doing a total enterprise. Because I want to make sure these phones work in a certain area before I roll them out to everything, so that we'll be a project plan.
And what do you do with the Cisco system? Do we just throw it away or sell it?
No, we could see, see, can we sell it on the market or something to get something from it? Or I may use a couple of phones as, as a enterprise emergency backup or something. But for the most part, we're going to see can we salvage it, because we can't use it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hicks. We'll see everybody at seven-thirty.
All right.